All right, welcome everybody to the wonderful study session we're about to have. We're gonna start off with the pledge of allegiance and maybe we can get Mr. Moody to lead it. It's chaos up here. We got Tucker on the stand. Okay, we're done with the pledge. We're gonna convene open session at this time. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Individuals wishing to address the city council or request to complete a speaker card and deliver it on over to Sylvia. And you get three minutes to talk about pretty much whatever you want. So with that, oh, we have some revisions. Revision to the agenda, item one, the presentation was updated. Item two, the presentation was updated and an attachment was added. So communications from the public, does anybody wish Sylvia, did anybody turn in a card?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for communication from the public.
Nobody wants to talk. Okay. And here we go, agenda items, number one, report utility, oh, this will go over well. Utility rate study update, water and sewer rate, sewer rate discussion. The magnificent Katie Hockett will, who is the Assistant Director of Utilities, will present this item. Good luck, Katie.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Sorry, I scooted closer here. We presented to you last, on July 3rd, and we're back. You had some questions at that time and we came back to answer those questions for you. So we'll just jump right in. So the, this is a summary of those requests. You wanted to see the proposed Edison rates. We wanted to see a map of how old the pipelines are. There was a question about reducing reserves, considering another option, building in a pause point, and then a comparison of all five years. So, the SCE rates, again, these are proposed SCE rates. This is what, this is not what they've approved, but this is what they've proposed. This is where the presentation was updated. There's a typo in Corona's KWH rates, that should be .13. So the SCE fixed charges proposed are $24, ours are $15.90, and their proposed KWH rates are .29, and ours are .13 in the aggregate. Next, we'll look at the maps. So this map is of the entire city. So you'll see that the ones that are more green, that's mostly gonna be in South Corona. Anything that's that greenish color is from 1990 and on. So we took those out. So this is just looking, just to kind of turn off some of that noise, this is just looking at anything from 1989 and older. So it's a little, it's a little hard to differentiate, but you can see that definitely in the middle of town is where we have that darker red and the darker orange. And as we spread out, we have more of the yellow. But these are the pipelines that are older than 1989. These blue lines represent all the pipe that's, again, 1990 or older. And this pipeline is all asbestos cement pipe. It looks like it is about 30% of the total. All right, the next question was about our reserves and if we can reduce our reserves. So we wanna break this question down a little bit. So first, can we reduce our reserve targets from three months to two months? The answer is yes, we can, we could. According to GFOA, the minimum reserve amount is two months. Is that something we wanna consider? Not, that's not recommended. The industry best practice is three months plus depreciation. Many of our utility agencies are moving to six-month operating reserves. And the rates include debt issuance, so if we were to reduce the reserves, that could affect our creditworthiness. Secondly, would reducing the reserves have an impact on the rates? The answer is no. So when the city council adopted the utility reserve policy a couple of years ago, it was a very slow funding process. So each year, the finance department does a calculation and takes 10% of the difference between the operating revenue and the operating expenses and puts that into the reserves. So this next slide is one that you saw at the last meeting on August 7th. So you'll see that bottom number is what's actually funded, and that top number is the goal. So you'll see that in all of these cases, the reserves are not fully funded, and they're not even close to being fully funded. So to reduce this target wouldn't affect the rates at all. I will say that for the electric utility, part of the rate process is to fully fund the reserve, and this has a moderate reserve amount. So that is part of that, that rate increase, and that's a 4% rate increase, as a reminder. All right, so the next one is options. So there was a question about, can we consider some other options? So we wanna remind you of this slide that we looked at at the very beginning, which has the five options that we originally talked about. Over on the left, we have our lowest rate impact, and on the right, we have our highest rate impact. The lowest rate would be doing no capital investment at all, and the highest rate impact would be fully funding our capital program. At that, at that rate, up there on the fully funding side, the rate increase would have been 15% and 16% for water and sewer, and it would have included $170 million in debt issuance. So this, this rate that we're recommending, which is option two, is actually the, the best of, of these options that allows us to invest in our critical infrastructure. Looking at this again, again, left to right, with the lowest rate impacts up to the highest rate impacts. The, the pros, obviously, on the left are that we would have the lowest rate impact to our customers, but it doesn't fund any of those critical capital improvement projects, and it would end up being more expensive in the long run. What we are proposing again, which is option two for water and sewer, is to do minimal investment in the infrastructure to fund those critical projects. We would take out some debt. We would look at that when the time comes, I think it's in year three, and see if it's time for us to issue that debt. So we would have some interest on that debt service. There is a bit of an impact, a higher impact to the customers, but it's not the, the highest impact, that's that option five all the way on the right. There was a question about can we build in a pause point? And the answer to that question is yes. If the council desires, we can present an update on this item at the fall workshop in 2027, once we have two and a half years of data. And then we can make modifications effective January 1st of 2028. If we, if that's the option that council wants to go with, then we would include this language that's in the yellow box on that Prop 218 notice, which would essentially give the council the opportunity to do that. So this is the five-year comparison for the sewer rates. So again, option one on the top is the, is only funding operations and maintenance and debt service. And the option two on the bottom is the recommended option, which is to fund our critical infrastructure needs. You'll see across the top that for option two, the rate increase is 10% a year with a 45% debt issuance in fiscal year 2026. And you can see those rates all the way out to 2020.
Forty-five million or forty-five, you said 45%?
Forty-five million, sorry about that.
Just wanna make sure.
Forty-five million. Again, this is looking at our sewer rates in year one, and we know that many of these agencies surrounding us are, are doing rate studies right now. Elsinor, Norco, Harupa. So our rates for sewer, this is just for sewer. The green bar is where, is, I'm sorry, the red bar is where we are now, and the green bar to the left is where we're proposing to go in year one. You'll recall that we were proposing to make some changes to the water budget. And this is where those are going to land. These are slides that you've seen before. There's not any new information here. But we are proposing to reduce the indoor water standard to the, the state's mandated level. It's going to reduce the tiers a little bit, but we're also proposing to completely eliminate tier five and just have the two higher tiers. Same thing for multifamily, that we're proposing the lower indoor standard. So the water rates for the five-year comparison. This is where we put, this is where we assign the, the costs for each of these, these tiers. So those higher tiers are paying for conservation. The lower tiers are getting some of the revenue offset from interest income. This is option one. Again, this is funding only O&M and debt service, and it would be a 7%, 5%, 4, 4, and 4. So you can see the five-year comparison on these rates. On the left are your fixed rates, and these are based on the meter size. On the right, those are your variable rates, and that's the per-unit cost. This is option two. This is our recommended option to fund the critical infrastructure. It would be 9% per year with a $50 million debt issuance in, in year two. This is just, again, comparing our, our water rates overall, an average bill for an average residential customer. Our current rates are that red bar, that's the third from the left, and then our proposed rates are the green bar, which is the fourth one from the left. Again, many of these other agencies are also in the middle of doing rate studies, so their rates are likely to change. This is the total rate impact, so obviously, most of our customers are buying water and sewer services from us. So we wanna look at the total impact. And this is what, what you had requested, but we wanted to kind of build up to that. So this is showing the five-year comparison. Option one on the top, option two on the bottom. So right now, the rates for option one would be $110.41 a month, roughly. In year five, that would be $135.15, roughly. And then option two, that would be 110 in our current rate, and it would be 171 in year five. This is for a commercial customer, so the previous one was for a residential customer. This is for a commercial customer. Going from 596 in your, in the current rates, up to 715 in year five for option one. And for option two, from 596 up to 912 in, in year five. This is, again, this is in year one. This is a year-one comparison of our water and sewer combined on the residential. The current is that second bar from the, the left, that's the red one. And then the third bar from the left is our proposed, which is green. And that brings us to our next steps. So with, with council recommendation today, we will go to October 2nd, which we will be back to present the final report. That's the legal document that, that goes through this whole process. And then we would issue the Prop 218 notice right after that, with a rate hearing scheduled for November 20th, a second reading on December 4th, and then rate implementation in January. Happy to take any feedback on that.
All right, thank you, Katie. Sylvia, are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, yes, I have one speaker card for this item.
Is it Joe? The floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody. It's, it's wild, like, over and over and over again. The, this, this thing keeps playing out and nothing ever changes. You never really get any answers. You say, well, those pipes are old, so like, you're gonna replace all of them. And there, there is no project to do all of them. There's not, there's not even, like, a plan to replace all of them. We're not gonna replace all of them. And we sort of act like, well, if we don't fund this amount, then it's all gonna fall apart, when we're not doing any of it anyway. You can't even show, like, which ones have been done, which ones are likely to get done. That's the map you need. Hey, what's, what's the things that we're actually gonna do within the terms of this rate period? What are we gonna be, what are we gonna be doing? What do we need money for? What might we need money for? Not just like, whoa, golly gosh, these are old pipes, you know? You keep asking, you guys ask, I ask, how long do these things last? Well, you know, their, their forecast to last this long. Well, how, what kind of shape are they? Well, we don't really know. We'll, we'll find out, but we don't really know. You know, and so every time, it comes back with this just grab bag of nonsense of like, yeah, we're gonna replace everything, you know? And you're not, you're not. I mean, so I live in one of the old areas, you know, because clearly, everything's just falling apart, and I see broken water mains all over the place, or leaking ones, or projects. No, I don't see any of that. And I've seen one, there was one down Kellogg, I think they replaced. And I saw the city basically pay for it as, as they went. The world didn't stop turning. I don't, I don't understand the rationale of jacking up the rates for this critical operations and maintenance upkeep, these big projects, and just throwing this in here like it's a real thing. The other thing that really ticks me off is hearing, well, if, if we don't increase the reserve, then it's not gonna affect the rates. That's like Peggy Money Math. You can't say that we're gonna, we need to increase the rates because we need to increase the reserve, but then say if we don't increase the reserve, then it's not gonna increase, then it's not gonna change the rates. You can't have both of those at the same time. You could say, well, it might not increase. Nobody's claiming that it's gonna go down. Nobody thinks that's a realistic possibility. But to say that it's not gonna change the increase is another thing. Also, to show, well, you know, it's, that the rate's only gonna go by this much when you don't show the pretty significant fixed use, you know, the meter charge. Those are going up by a lot. And to not throw those together and say, well, this is the real impact. Well, you just show the use fees. Well, it's not really that much. It's only like six bucks, 12 bucks, something like that, when the use fee, the, the meter fee is gonna go up by 15 or 20 bucks. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Joe. Sylvia, is that it for speaker cards?
Mayor, I do not have any more speaker cards.
Okay, with that, public comments are closed. T-Dog?
Mr. Moody, a month and a half or so ago, on Maine and Harrison, I think it was, in front of Boondocks, there was a, a huge break in the water system. I don't, I don't know exactly what type of system was there. All I know is I saw water bubbling up from the ground. Was that a planned break?
No.
Okay, so when something like that happens, is there just a big pot of money somewhere that we can pull from in order to fix those things?
No, generally, we have to pull from our fund balance, or we have to refund, move funding from a planned project to that unplanned repair.
So, yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at, is that when, when something like that happens, which we can't really plan for, because if we could, then we wouldn't be in this situation. But when something like that happens, the money has to come from somewhere. And if we have a project that was planned, that we had money earmarked for, and a critical break like that happens, money, that project gets on the back burner, essentially. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
It would get pushed out and, and carried through to the next planning cycle, yes.
So in order to stop that cycle of when stuff breaks that we don't know about, and we have projects scheduled that we're now taking money from, what we're trying to do is get ahead of it. And we're trying to start fixing things before things like that happen, or replacing things before things like that happen. And we're trying to financially plan for that. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, sir, and that's us building those reserves.
Okay, I think that option two, which is what is recommended, is where we absolutely need, need to go. This is not a fun decision. We're all gonna be affected by it. But I don't want to continue to not be able to do projects because we're taking money for things that break. So I'm 100% for option number two. Thank you.
Wesley?
Oh, that's my, that's my fun nickname, is this Wesley? I don't get, no, I'm just kidding, I don't need it, it's all good. I'm, I'm fine. I didn't have any other questions I thought that you answered. And thank you for, Tony, for bringing, bringing up those water main, those breaks, because, you know, I'm, I am a lunatic, and I, and I comment on every C-Click Fix in my district. And I can say that there's been several, several breaks, including areas that are just 25 or 30 years old. I don't keep track of the other parts of the city, so I, I don't have any, you answered my questions. I'm, I'm in favor of option two, with the caveat that we can come back in two and a half years and, and look and see where we are, and that there's an opportunity for us to not fully implement the increase, or as big of an increase, to kind of see where we are and, and how those, those things are going. I'm in favor. Thank you.
Jackie?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Quick question, on slide 30, or at least it's 30 on mine, is, does that not include fixed rates? I thought that did include fixed rates.
That does include the fixed rates, yes.
Okay, so this is total impact for the average customer?
Yes, for the average customer, yes.
Okay. Okay, you know, someone really wise recently said to me, the decisions that we regret were made 30 years ago. And I think that's totally true, especially when it comes to, you know, infrastructure and, and, and I, and it also means that the decisions we're making right now, while difficult, we're trying to plan ahead and lay a better groundwork. And I just, it kills me, it kills me that we're in this place, but it feels like it's, it's, it's mostly pass-through impacts, both pass-through of regulations and pass-through of costs. And both things that, you know, we don't have control over. So we can't stop the state from telling us, you know, these are the, these are your limitations, and get with it. And you gotta make water a way of life for their bill. And we can't stop the, you know, municipal water districts from passing on their rates as well. So it pains me. I appreciate that you've looked at, and I understand why. We're slowly growing those reserves, adjusting the ultimate goal isn't necessarily going to reduce. to reduce the difference now, or in the very near future. So, yeah, it seems like the wisest option is the option two, and it's the most reserve of the wisest options. Because if we're being completely frank, you know, we probably, we would love to be in a place where we can be even more proactive with our improvements of infrastructure. But where we are right now, I think option two makes the most sense. Thank you.
Jim?
So, basically, I mean, doing option one is basically doing nothing, and it's, it'll hurt us in the long run. Just a reminder, you guys, MWD is raising our rates 37% in 2025 and '26. And that's just for the first two years of our rate study. So, in '27, '28, '29, which is still part of our rate study, what's the likelihood that they're gonna raise rates again? I say pretty significant. So, if you don't do something now, each of you will probably, good chance you'll still be on council when the next rate study comes. I want to be long gone. But I don't want to put you guys through what the previous council put us through. So, unfortunately, yeah, we have to do something. And option two is, like Jackie said, the least impactful, but we gotta do that as a minimum. So, I'm good with it.
I have one quick question. When you build new, is it all PVC?
So, a lot of times, it's ductile iron. So, a lot of the water main infrastructure is ductile iron. That's our current standard to date. Over the past few years, past number of years, we've had some real significant challenges doing ductile iron. So, we do use PVC or HDPE pipe in those cases.
What's HDPE?
HDPE is, basically, it's a continuous run of pipe. It's like plastic, it's a thick-walled, heavy-duty plastic that's welded together, actually, out in the field.
And then, you have no seams?
Yeah, so, there are seams, but you're talking pretty significant runs of that CPV, or that PVC HDPE pipe, where it's welded, and that weld is pretty solid. So, not too many cracks or breaks with that.
I can say that MWD, for the Mulholland Tunnel, that they bring water from Owens Lake, that they, their emergency seismic standard, so, just in case there's a giant earthquake, the San Andreas severs, that their water will be guaranteed through HDPE pipes. So, they have, in that big 12-foot tunnel that they bring water through, they have HDPE pipes that are ready to be hooked up. They can hook them up in an hour, and that they can withstand a shift in the earth. So, they're great.
Do you seam weld them? Is that what you do?
Yeah, you seam weld them at the butts.
Okay. And the lifespan of HDPE is like 100 years plus?
I think it's 120 years, is what the manufacturers are saying. I don't know that we have enough evidence in the ground to see, you know, what all the soil conditions and effects and impacts are. So, we're gonna have, you know, that'll be something that we obviously track and look at through the engineering process over the next few decades.
Okay, so in 200 years, all the problems will be solved. All right, I'm option two as well. Katie, I think that's the direction you need, right?
And we got some feedback about a check-in point?
Yes, yes, on check-in.
Confirm that, thank you.
Okay, that retires number one. Up next is number two, report city park update and value engineering. DK, Community Service Director, and Justin Tucker's in on this. Assistant City Manager will present this item. Good luck, DK.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I am really happy to be here today to provide another update on the city park project. We have some updates that we've made since you've last seen the project in April. And we also have a few options that we're gonna be presenting to you for value engineering, as well as one potential enhancement. So, our ask of the council today is that you receive this update on the city park design process and provide direction on value engineering options and enhancements. And just to give a quick overview of what we're gonna be touching on, some of the key points in the presentation, I mentioned we have a few exciting updates to share based on feedback that we received, both from the City Council, as well as the Parks Commission, when we last presented the project in April. We also have some value engineering options that we're gonna be discussing. We have two buckets of value engineering options. The first bucket is some of the options that are gonna provide what we feel are very minor impacts to the project. It's not gonna affect the overall scope of the programming or operations plan. So, we've put all of those minor adjustments into a single bucket. And then, we have some larger value engineering options that we wanted to give you the opportunity to really kind of dive into with us and give us some direction on whether we want to pursue, reduce, maintain, or enhance those. And then, lastly, we'll circle back to get council direction on each of those items. So, before I get into the presentation, I just wanted to show an overview, a slide of the project, and all of the different elements and amenities that we're proposing for the city park redesign. I'll start at the left, or the east, I'm sorry, the west side of the project site. So, I'll be going left to right on this slide. And if you'll recall, over in the Panhandle area on the left side, we're proposing to relocate the outdoor sports courts over to that side. Right now, we have three outdoor basketball courts that are proposed for that area, as well as a pump-track skate park, kind of a combined amenity for that specific use that wraps around those sports courts. And then, moving right or east on the project site, up on the north top side of the slide, you'll see the iconic playground area. We're proposing two sets of playgrounds, a larger playground, more challenging playground set for the five-to-12-year-olds, and then, we have a smaller toddler-area playground for the two-to-five-year-olds. Just below that, we have the urban edge, is what we're calling it, with our botanical garden area and some walking paths surrounding that. And then, moving over towards the right, we have our community living room. That's an outdoor seating, gathering area. Just to the right of that, we have the community canvas, which is that large circular lawn area in the middle of the project site, where we're planning to host a lot of our large-scale events, hopefully move our street fair there, our movies in the park, and other festivals that we're planning to begin to prepare for over the next few years once this project gets developed. Then, over on the far right-hand side, or far east side of the project site, we've got our community center building, as well as our aquatic center. So, just to give an update on some changes that we've made to the project since you've last seen it, one of the things that we did was we took a look at the layout of the building with the design team over at RIOSE to kind of get a better idea of where we have the different uses grouped within the building layout. Originally, we had some of our, what we're calling our noisier uses, such as the fitness center and gymnasium, kind of grouped near the classroom spaces, which are some of the more quieter uses. So, we worked with the designer to rearrange this. So, when you walk into the building, in the center of the building, of the main lobby area, you'll have all the noisier, more uses that generate more physical activity grouped together on the north side of the project site. So, when you walk in, you'll see to the right where we'll have our gymnasium. And then, just north of that, you have the fitness center, as well as what we're calling the group fitness room, and then, a walkway leading directly out to the aquatic center. So, those are all very compatible uses grouped near each other. Again, they're a little bit, they generate a little bit more activity, more noise, so we thought it would be best to keep those near one another. And then, to the left of the entrance, when you walk in, you get our quieter uses. So, that's gonna be our admin building, where we're having our staff offices. We're gonna have the classroom space there, the banquet center. Again, those uses kind of are a little similar to one another. They generate more passive activities. So, having those grouped together really lends itself to create more of a similar type of environment. Moving on to the splash pads, so, if you recall, the original splash pad design that we presented with the concept back in April showed more of, like, a linear water feature. We had a lot of the sprays that were built into the ground, but there really weren't very many above-ground play amenities. So, we received some feedback that the council commission wanted to see more of a traditional type of splash pad design, where we had more above-ground play amenities, buckets, those types of things. So, we went back to the drawing board with RIOSE. They came back with what we thought was a really great design. It incorporates more natural elements, so it gives that stone facade feature where the splash pad could blend in with the park when it's not in use. It could be an area that children could still play on the rocks. It could be a seating area. But then, in our warmer spring and summer months, we can activate that space as a splash pad. We have a water tower design that's proposed for that. We have some overhead buckets. And it's really gonna be a good multi-use facility, or splash pad area, that we feel will be able to blend with the park, both when it's in use and not in use. So, we were really excited about this change, and wanted to make sure that you were aware that we had made that enhancement here. Next, in the aquatic center, again, based on feedback that we received in the April presentation, we went back to RIOSE and asked for some enhancements over to the recreation pool. So, if you remember, we have two pools that are proposed. We've got the recreation pool on the left side, and then, we have the competition pool on the right side. So, these enhancements are really focused on the recreation pool. We added two really large tube slides that are gonna lead directly into the recreation pool area. It's gonna complement nicely with the other features that we had proposed there. We have some play features. And then, we had proposed a lazy river, which originally had just kind of a simple oval-shaped design. And we went back with the design team and added a few more curves just to make it kind of a nice, fun amenity that people will want to really utilize.
What is the capacity of those tubes? I'm asking for a friend. Could, like, adults go down that?
Yes, they'll be for both children and adults.
Yeah. Now, yeah, that's true. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, this slide just shows our initial project cost estimates. So, based off of the original design, we were right about where we had anticipated we would be, just under $100 million, so $99.6 million. This was before those enhancements that I just discussed in the previous slides, which adds an additional $1.4 million to the project, as well as prior to the contingency. But one of the things that we really committed to doing when we started the design process was to look at options to value engineer. So, find areas where we could shave some costs off without having some big impacts on the project. So, we did take an initial look at value engineering options. The options that we've identified right here in the cost savings under the value engineered options are, again, the ones that are gonna have the least impact. That's that first bucket of options that I'm gonna be going through in the next few slides. Just based off of those initial minimal impact reductions, we can take off just under $4 million to the project cost, which puts us at $95.6 before, again, the design enhancements and the contingency. So, these next slides, I'm gonna dig into a little bit more what those initial value engineering options are. So, the first group is on the exterior of the project for the landscape design. We have three adjustments that we are proposing for this area, again, that have the, what we feel is the smallest impact. The first is the terrace seating. Right now, it's the built-in seating area that is initially proposed for the community canvas. It would create almost like a little mini amphitheater on the exterior ring of the canvas. We are, we're not proposing, but we are looking at an option to potentially remove this. It would, this savings would give us about $250,000 in savings if we removed the actual terrace built-in seating and replaced it with landscaping. So, it would just be, we could still keep the grade where it would be elevated. It would just be more of a landscape slope, instead of an actual built-in seating area. The next is a reduction in the shrubs.
Donna, real quick, when you say a landscape slope, would it be grass still, so people could sit on it?
Correct, yes. It would be turf.
Thanks.
The next is the shrub area. Right now, the project is proposed to have shrubs throughout. Just doing a very slight 20% reduction of shrubs and replacing it, again, with more turf or different types of lower-scale landscaping, would provide a $200,000 savings. So, this is another area that we're looking at that would have what we feel is a very minimal impact on the overall look of the project. And then, the last outdoor one that I want to talk about in this first bucket is a reduction in paving. This is a 20% reduction to reduce the paved area and replace it with DG. So, some of the areas that we were looking to do that would be maybe on the walking paths, making them a little bit more narrow, and having a DG option walking path with a paved option walking path right next to it. Just making that small reduction in the paving would save an additional $200,000. Next, we're gonna move to the interior of the building. There are a few more options that are proposed for the interior that we, again, believe would have a minimal impact. First is a reduction in the fitness center. We have the fitness center workout room, as well as the group fitness room, which would be more for, like, Zumba, Pilates, yoga classes. That would take place in the group fitness room, and then, the fitness center would have all of the actual workout equipment. Doing a reduction of 10% to both of those spaces would save us $350,000 for the fitness center and $200,000 for the group fitness room. So, about $550,000 total, just reducing those spaces by 10%. Right now, the size of those spaces are initially proposed at 4,100 square feet for the group, I'm sorry, for the fitness center, and 2,200 square feet. So, a 10% reduction would still, we believe, give us ample size to be able to put the level of equipment and fitness programming in those spaces that we had originally planned for. Next is the spin room. The spin room was an added amenity that we had looked at to potentially enhance that fitness wellness center area. But as we started, again, to dig into the programming plan, we realized that having to program that space, it would be a very individual-use space. It would be difficult to program it for multi-use. So, we took a look at what removing that space and just having the group fitness room and the fitness center without the spin room would save us, and that would be a savings of $800,000. And that's just based off of the cost per square foot and the equipment to put in there. So, we came up with that estimate using that formula. Moving down, we looked at the finished ceilings in the fitness area. So, original design had a gypsum board finished ceiling in those two spaces. But because of the look, the environment of a fitness workout area, looking at an option to open up that ceiling, kind of expose the ductwork, would give us a $200,000 savings. So, we wanted to explore that a little bit further as part of a potential reduction that we felt would have a minimal impact on the project. Continuing to move down on the slide, back to the left side in the middle, we have the interior plaster walls. So, the original concept design has a mix of both plaster and gypsum drywall on the interior of the building. If we were to reduce the plaster walls by 40% and convert that over to the gypsum board drywall, that would give us a savings of $500,000. And we could still have a lot of opportunities to spruce up those walls with murals. We can hang nice photos. So, we believe, again, that would have a very minimal impact on the project, but still give us a pretty significant savings.
Donna, really quick, when you remove plaster in favor of drywall, do you, I would imagine that you lose some of the sound-deadening capabilities between plaster and drywall.
You potentially would. I think the building would still have sufficient insulation to be able to buffer those sounds, where we're gonna make sure... And again, that also lends itself to the quieter uses, being on one side of the building, with the noisier uses being on the other, and the lobby separating that. But they, I don't believe there's concerns that taking the plaster down would provide a significant impact on the noise.
So, when you say reduce 40%, is that 40% in cost for the walls? Or is that 40% of the walls, we're gonna reduce them from plaster to drywall, or...?
It's 40% of the plaster that's being proposed on the interior of the building.
So, I guess maybe when they're thinking of the design, you know, the plaster could be on the outside walls, and the drywall could be on the inside walls, type of thing?
Correct, correct, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Finch, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
What is the capacity room, the capacity change in both the conference room and the banquet room, from the original proposed to where we're at right now?
So, the conference room right now, as it was originally proposed, is about a 100-person conference room, square footage is 2,500 square feet. So, reducing that by 33%, which is what is being proposed in the slide, would take it down to about 66, 67 people. It would still be a room that's divisible into two classroom spaces. The initial design has it divisible into three classroom spaces. So, it would be cutting out one of those potential classroom dividing options and just making it a smaller conference room or two classrooms.
And the banquet?
The banquet takes it down from, it's at 400 capacity right now, or 7,000 square feet. 10% reduction would take it down to a 360-person capacity. That is still more than what we have in the CCC right now. The CCC can hold about 275 people. So, bumping it... So bumping it up to 360 would still give us a significant increase on the amount of people it could hold.
Do you have examples of what the interior wall difference looks like? Like what the, do you have pictures of what?
Of the, the gypsum versus the plaster? We do not, unfortunately. I don't think that's one.
And then do we have images of what the finished ceiling comparison looks like?
So I do have some images. When we get to the linear metal ceilings, that's one of the larger options that we're going to be proposing, proposing in the further slides with the finished ceiling. But the open ductwork versus the, the gypsum, I do not have.
Okay.
Not in this presentation.
So this, so the item, if we go back one slide, that item of the finished ceilings removed in fitness area, we don't have a picture of what that looks like?
Not in this, in this presentation, I do not.
Okay.
I would say most gyms, commercial gyms, don't have finished ceilings. They have exposed ductwork and whatnot because it's easier to maintain and it's, it makes the space taller.
When we, what do we define then as fitness area? Because it looks like it's out in the corridor and not necessarily inside of the, the line. So finished ceilings, that line traces to like the hallway.
Yes, I apologize for that. That's a mistake. That line should go directly into the fitness center room and the group fitness room. So that, that first block of rooms.
Fitness dance spin, just that first block?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
I just had one question. The square footage of the reduced classroom, fitness room, 4,500 square feet, you said?
The, the conference room or the, the fitness room?
The fitness room, fitness center.
The fitness center right now is 4,100 square feet. So a 10% reduction would be 410 square feet.
And then what is the, the square footage of, of the?
The group fitness room?
No, of the rooms that are at CCC. So upstairs and the, the game room and, I mean, minus the?
I don't have the individual room square footage. I believe the total building square footage is around 30,000 square feet, but we don't have the individual room breakout right now. But these, these spaces are, are larger than the CCC rooms. We do know that.
Okay, I'd be curious what they actually are, just because I'm thinking, I mean, I know what 4,100 square feet looks like, and I'm trying to think of what that would be at the CCC. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and to put a little bit more context, we did some tours of community centers. One of the community centers we visited was in Huntington Beach. They had a very nice, large workout room or workout fitness center. And I believe the square footage was about 3,200 square feet, and it gave ample space for all of the workout equipment. So we kind of used that as a comparison as we were determining what size capacity ideally we would like to see.
Okay, I was just trying to compare it with the other, but that's fine. That's good. Thank you.
Ms. Finch, I still have more questions. What, are we, for the banquet, are we losing, are we proposing to lose any of the outside seating?
We are not, no.
Do we know how much outside seating is available?
I believe it was about 100 is what was originally proposed with the concept design for the outdoor courtyard.
Does that, is that counted towards the capacity or is that not being touched at all?
No, that's not part of the interior capacity.
Does the design allow for the spaces to be merged, you know, with doors lifting?
We, we have not gotten to that portion of the design yet. That's definitely something that we could look to incorporate, to be able to open that space up so they can, it can be an indoor/outdoor space. We can, we can absolutely explore that.
Are there any differences in amenities between the conference room and the banquet room?
The banquet room is designed for more large-scale, grander events. The conference room is really for more, again, it could be utilized as a classroom space. It could be utilized for large group meetings. But the, the amenities in the banquet room are going to be definitely to a higher scale in the finishes. We, we plan that to be more of the grander space.
So just look nicer?
Yes.
Can the banquet room be divided?
That's something we are definitely exploring, yes, to, to put dividers up.
I, I ask because as you can, where I'm probably leading is, is there a space there where we, those two spaces? Because I don't love the idea of losing capacity in a banquet room. Because it is a thing in our community that we hear, we don't have, we don't offer. Conference rooms for 60 people, you could, you could argue that you could get a space, you know, at the library for 60 people. But a banquet hall, we don't have. So my, where my thought process is, if these things, if they don't offer any different amenities and if they can, the banquet hall can be divided up, does it make sense for us to consider those two things in the cost-saving perspective? Like to merge them and not lose space in the banquet room? To save some money.
Can I jump in here really quickly? So first of all, the conference room is, is essentially two classrooms that can be opened up. So there'll be some cabinets and there're probably, likely to be a sink in each of those separate ones. So the big conference room could be divided into or three in, in, in the original design. And the staff are, are bringing back value engineering proposals, but these are all up for consideration. And if you, if council wants to weigh one way or the other, these are just options for you. So if you want to retain the entire space, these aren't, these aren't, the staff aren't putting their thumb on the scale one way or the other. So the conference room is really like two classrooms that can be opened up. And so it is a different setup. The banquet room is really somewhere where you would host a quinceañera, a wedding or, or some big event. And as it is designed right now, it would be divisible into two. So technically, you could have 120 people on each side of that having different events.
Other than the sink, what is the difference? Can you, if you were dividing the banquet hall into two separate rooms, can you not divide it into four?
You could absolutely do that. The, the, once again, the, the conference rooms will have some cabinets or some countertop or some storage space, but you absolutely could divide the banquet room into, into four, if, if that's something that you'd like to recommend.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Justin, did you say that there would be 120 people on each side of the banquet room?
I did, but, but in practicality, you could have essentially 180, right? We'd have some, have some buffer space.
I thought it was 400.
The current design is 400. The value engineer would take 10% off of that, so that would bring it to 360.
Right, okay.
And you could divide that in half to 180. Or if you wanted to retain the same size, it would be 200 on each side.
Okay. Do we know what the occupancy load is of the multipurpose room here at City Hall?
I do not.
I'm just curious, trying to get an idea on how big it would be compared to the conference room. Only holding 67 people after it's valued engineer, but you can come to the multipurpose room with 120.
Right, what did we say the Circle City Center banquet room seats?
It's about 275, 280.
So I, I want to keep the banquet room as large as possible for all the reasons that Jackie said. And I think that, you know, incorporating or being able to incorporate outside seating inside is a great idea. I think we need to take full advantage. I'm not excited about a conference room at all. I could get rid of the whole thing, I couldn't care less. But the banquet room, I like a lot, and I think that's something our community has been asking for, for a long, long time. So that's my thoughts on that. Just because I actually have a little bit of experience with this, but when you get into walls that you can move, it gets pretty expensive really quick, where these value engineering cost savings would get eaten up probably by a movable wall to, oh, I, I agree with you. I like the inside-outside ability, but 100-foot of movable wall or 200-foot of movable wall would be several hundred thousand dollars in order to do that. Maybe they could come up with a smaller version of that, but I'm with you on the, not removing the size of the banquet room. I think that we need to have a big banquet room because if, I was going to ask the same question about the CCC, what's the capacity? And if it's currently 260-ish and we go to, even with the 10% reduction of 360, I'd like to be able to see us hold bigger events. I do not like the idea of breaking it into fours, though. I'm okay with two if it's 400, if the capacity is 400. I, I don't know how that would work for breaking it into four. Are they long and skinny? Do you, do you cross it or, or what? But I think that if you have two banquet rooms with the capacity of 200 and/or one banquet room with the capacity of 400, I think that gives our community a bigger ability to hold different types of events. I mean, 400 people at a wedding or something like that would, is doable. The other, the other recommendations, I, I agree. I think removing the spin room, I don't think that that's going to be a big seller if we program it. And I can imagine that it's going to be costly to get spin bikes and the maintenance of those and whatnot. I actually would have suggested that we don't finish the ceilings in the gym and just have exposed ductwork. You know, I, I don't think that, even though it says that they're reducing the size of the fitness room, I think it's already, even with the reduction, it's bigger than what we already have. So I like that we're looking at ways to save some of that money. The only thing that I don't want to do is lower the size of the banquet room.
I'm in agreement. And the only reason why I was suggesting, it goes to me, I'm thinking if we're going to save money in this conference room and, you know, it's just the utility of a 66-person room versus the utility of a 400-person banquet room, I think are very different. And I value the banquet room size at a higher value than the conference room. So I just made the connection in the sense of, you know, we could lose the conference room altogether if the amenities are the same and if we could just split those up. But if it costs a lot, the one thing I don't want to lose, as my colleagues have said, is the size of the banquet room. I don't know what that ceiling looks like, but I, if it's being contained to that one building, then I'm okay with that. And I, I would be, because we have other spaces that can serve as conference spaces, and I'm just thinking about the library, you know, I'd even be open to reconsidering the conference room if it allows for other amenities to stay. Thank you.
All right, so this slide just shows a summary of all of the, the breakdown savings or potential savings from each of the options we presented. We do definitely have in our notes, it sounds like majority direction is to, to keep banquet room at current size. So we'll, we can circle back on that one at the very end once we get the final direction from council.
I also, I'm sorry, I, I, I hate the idea of losing that terrace seating. I thought it was a really great feature. I recognize, again, that we're trying to save money here. I don't know that a slope is going to be used in the same way that terrace seating would be used during like a summer concert series or during our events. I just, I don't know that it's going to be used in the same way. So I don't know that I, that I love that, that it's on the chopping block.
I mean, my thoughts on that were that A, I thought that that was going to be a nice hiding place for people and that it going away would, wouldn't be a, wouldn't be a bad thing. And the total space available in the community areas, it's big. I mean, really big. It would hold like 5,000 people.
A hiding place on a step?
Because it's, it's three, it's three terraces down. So someone could basically be napping there and he wouldn't see them.
You can sleep on it.
Well, I mean, you'd be less, more likely to see someone on a slope than, than tucked into a seat, but that's just my personal opinion. I think frankly, it's, it's a nice aesthetic. I think it looks great, but I don't think we're going to get, you know, get what we want out of it, not for $250,000.
Another question about the shrubs. So it's a 20% cost savings. Is there any consideration about like the long-term costs of turf versus shrubs in water consumption? Like, are they actually equal in replacement to one another?
So may I add, I'll just interject here. It's, it's not that, that it would be replaced with, with grass. It would be, they would be spaced out a little bit further or there'd be a little bit additional mulch. But we don't anticipate that you'd be able to see the loss of 20% of the shrubs, and it wouldn't necessarily be replaced with something that would consume more water.
Okay, thank you.
Just have one other comment. I'm going to date myself a little bit to anybody that remembers the Irvine Meadows, but they had a grassy area that you could sit on for concerts and it was almost at a 90-degree angle. It was not fun at all. So please do not put the grass at a 90-degree angle because it's very hard to sit on when you're sliding down the grass.
That's the Oingo Boingo Concerts.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to move on to the larger reduction and enhancement options. We're going to spend a little bit more time on these. We do have actual images for each of these to kind of give an idea of what each of these potential reductions could look like. And then we're going to be asking for direction on each individual item for the reduction items. We have seven and then one enhancement option. So the first one is the community living room. One of the things that we heard when we came with the original concept design is that there is a lot of hardscape in the project. So as an option to look at ways to potentially reduce the hardscape, we took a look at the outdoor community living room. Again, this is a gathering area. It's an area that's being proposed right now with built-in seating. There are some play amenities, some seesaws. But again, there's a significant amount of hardscape that is required to make this happen. So we wanted to give the council two options to look at reducing this if you chose to make a reduction here. One is to reduce the seating and hardscape area by 50%. That would give a potential savings of about $300,000. The next is to remove the hardscape seating area altogether, which would give a potential savings of $600,000. This would be another area that we would replace with turf, turf and, and some other type of softscape landscaping items, as well as some of the traditional benches that you see in our parks, not the built-in benches. We could have some picnic areas here. But again, this is one that we wanted to give you an opportunity to look at and chime in. And just so you know, at the very end, I'm going to go through each of these options, and we have a summary slide where we can discuss each one individually after I present each item. The next reduction option is the skate park pump track. This is another area where we've received mixed feedback on. We have some people that really love the skate park. There's already a skate park in the park, so a lot of people want to make sure that that remains as an amenity there. There's others who have expressed feelings of not wanting the skate park to be there. So we wanted to bring this back for another look. Two options for the skate park pump track are reducing it by 50%, which would save $250,000. This reduction would be to the pump track attachment to the skate park. So if you look at the rendering here, at the very top of the image, you see you have the traditional kind of skate park bowl area where you've got the jumps, the ramps, and then it meanders off into a little pathway that wraps around the, the basketball courts and then into a pump track area. So the reduction of 50%, what is being recommended as part of this option would be to take the pump track piece off and keep the actual traditional skate park, and that would save the $250,000. If we were to remove this altogether, that would save $600,000. That would be taking both of those pieces out. And then, again, we would just be looking at more of a softscape, landscape, turf replacement in place of those two items. The next one is the outdoor ramp. So this is a design amenity that I think we all thought was pretty intriguing when we saw it. It's an exterior ramp that, that wraps around the west facing of the building and the community canvas. It doesn't lead into any of the interior areas, but it does give a real neat bird's-eye view of the park, the community canvas. You can also look into the interior of the building based off of the window design that is being proposed in the concept. So we, again, thought this was a really neat feature, but as we started to look closer at the numbers and the cost came in, there is a very large price tag associated with it. It's 1.3 million to keep that outdoor ramp. So we're bringing this forward for another consideration to see if we wanted to remove that and have that savings of 1.3 million. The next is the exterior curtain wall glazing. This is kind of what we've been calling our wall of windows, also on the west side of the building, facing the community canvas. It gives a wonderful look into the inside of the building and what's going on there, also providing a great look for people inside the building to see outside. Really helps to kind of lend that, that whole area into an indoor/outdoor feel where the two spaces feel merged. But there is an option to reduce the windows at this area, a reduction of 20% of the windows and replacing that with plaster would give us a $200,000 savings. That would just be to reduce the size of the window. We wouldn't be taking the number of windows out, but the size of the window would be reduced and there would be a plaster border around each of those. The next option is the roofing materials. So the original design, if you recall, called for a terracotta tile roof. This is to reflect the historic significance of Corona, the Spanish-style architecture that you see in some areas of the downtown, as well as utilizing local materials. An option that was provided by our design team is to look at a different material, replacing that terracotta tile with a PVC-ribbed material would save $600,000. The PVC would be a, a single-ply roofing. The PVC would be a single-ply roofing with a simulated standing seam, the color would be a copper brown, so it would keep with the tonal quality of the terracotta, but it would be a different material and have a different look. Again, $600,000 potential savings that we wanted to put forward for consideration. Now, we're going to move to the interior of the building. So, the linear metal ceiling is a initial design feature that is really a wonderful feature that we were really excited to see in the concept design, but as some of the other features that we've noticed, that the price tag does get pretty high as we start to look at these finishes and design elements. So, removing that linear metal ceiling, this would be in the lobby area as well as the circulation and hallway areas, and replacing it with a finished gypsum board drywall would save $450,000. And then the last reduction option is the game room. So, right now, a game room is proposed right off of the main lobby and entry of the building. This right now is an unprogrammed space. It's a place that we had envisioned as more of a drop-in use. We anticipated putting things like ping-pong table, billiards, card tables, and it's an area that we believed would be utilized by a variety of different groups. It could be utilized by seniors during the day, teens in the afternoon and evening. Again, though, it is an unprogrammed space, it's not going to affect the operations plan for the building if we were to remove this space, and it does, as most of these other items, have a large price tag attached to it just based off of the price per square foot. So, removing that game room would save about 1.1 million, and we wanted to bring that forward as another reduction option.
Ms. Finch, in the original design, the game room, that was free of charge?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I just go to this right now and kill it? Part of this whole Circle City Park, this new park, was for kids in the surrounding area to have a place to come and go for free. I get that you have to charge for basketball and gyms and stuff like that, but I wanted kids to come in off the street and have a place to go for free. And that's what this game room meant to me. So, I can't support, this was the point of it. And making the park cool and everything else was great, but this was the point of it, is kids came in, and they could walk in, they have a place to do homework, they have a place to do games, find the old Pac-Man machines, whatever it is. I want to double the size of the game room. I'm with Jim, I couldn't care less about the conference room, so I want a place for the kids to go. So, I'm not in favor at all of removing 1.1 million, at all. It's, that's where you should put the first 1.1 million of this project. That's where I am.
How do the rest of you feel about the conference room? We have two that could care less about it, is there a third?
Yeah, I don't care about the conference room.
Yeah, I don't care about the conference room.
Cut all of it, cut everything but this, this is the only thing.
So, we can scrap the conference room, keep the banquet room big, have a great game room for the kids that's free.
Well, do we want to go down the list? That's coming up later, right?
I have feelings, but jump around, Jim, go for it.
We are going to give you a list to look at each of these individually, and we do have one enhancement option that I'm going to present before we get to the final list of all of them.
All right, we'll hang tight.
Okay, so this is just a summary slide showing the potential minimum and maximum cost reductions for each of these items as discussed in the previous slides. Now, the last area that we wanted to touch on is an enhancement option, so I know we're talking about cutting in a lot of areas or potential cuts, but one opportunity that we saw for an option to enhance is the gymnasium. The initial design for the project calls for a single full-size basketball court gymnasium, which is identical to what we have over at the CCC right now. This design would allow for one full-size court or two practice courts. We could still continue to run the same level of programming, there wouldn't really be any reductions in the program. But we, as we started to look into this a little bit further, we started to analyze what the need really is for indoor court space. We have heard a lot from our basketball leagues, our volleyball leagues, there really is a desire for more indoor courts, and we oftentimes have to turn groups away that are requesting to reserve our court space because we can't accommodate everybody and still have open gym use time. So, looking at the existing design for the gymnasium, in order to be able to enhance that, to provide two full-size courts, it would require a 40% increase in size. That would allow, again, two full-size courts, we could do one championship court, or we could do four junior courts. Junior courts are where we run a lot of our recreational, our internal recreation programs, where we have the little ones out there playing. So, that would be of tremendous value to be able to run four courts at the same time. We could also do a basketball game at the same time as a volleyball game, or multiple practices going on at once. So, there really is a lot of potential that we could expand programming now, not just internally, but also for our partner leagues to be able to utilize this space if we were to go to two full-size courts instead of one. But, the cost for that, for that 40% enhancement is about $2 million increase to the project size, so we wanted to bring that forward for consideration.
Donna, can you just clarify the, so it has two full-size courts, which also includes one championship court, and could also be four junior courts?
Correct, so it's the configuration of that space, so the space could be configured to one championship court, two full-size courts, or four junior courts.
And what's our biggest need?
Our biggest need right now is the full-size courts and the junior courts, so that's where we get the biggest.
We don't need a championship court.
We don't.
We're not going to be hosting any championships.
No, unless we could get the Lakers there.
The championship court, though, if I'm not mistaken, is automatic when you have the two full-size and the four small courts. You, by size-wise, you get a championship court, so it's not like if we say take out the championship court, you can't.
Yeah, I guess that was my question, is all three of these options potentially in one?
It is, yes, yes. There's no, we don't have to make it larger to get the championship.
Got it, okay, I'm tracking now, all right, thank you.
Before you go on, the bleachers are different. So, are there bleachers? I mean, I see the little tiny sliver bleachers, are they like, what, three each tier, and then the other ones like eight tier?
Yeah, so this isn't the final design, this is just an example of the space, but we would, we would design for bleachers to still be built into the walls where we could pull those out.
That $2 million number will still stick?
Yes, it will.
Okay, thanks.
And then, the basketball courts are also available for free, for free play, correct?
Currently, they are at the CCC, there was a fee attached to that previously, but we removed that during the pandemic, and it hasn't been restored.
I'm asking the proposal for the new center.
The proposal right now, I think we are looking to bring it back for the drop-in fee for indoor court space, but that's something that is still in consideration.
Okay, I'd like to revisit that, for sure.
We would definitely be charged in the leagues, though.
Yeah, correct, yes.
Yeah, okay.
But I know right now, we have like, some time that's just blocked off for free play.
At the CCC, we do right now, correct?
It is completely free for the community.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so this is the summary of all of the eight options. We have, again, the seven potential reductions, and then the last one is the gymnasium enhancement. So, we wanted to, if you'd like to go through these one by one, or we'd be happy to answer any additional questions before we start discussion, but we're looking for direction on each of these eight options.
All right, let's just go one by one.
Well, do you want to go with the public first?
Oh, sure. Joe, would you like to speak? Or Dawn? Joe?
I have some clarifying questions. Do we have an image of what the exterior wall glazing would look like? Because right now, the image is just glass, and I can't really picture what a 20% reduction would look like visually.
We do not have images of that, the design team did not come back with that.
And what about, is that something that you think maybe can be, is that easy to mock up, or is that a whole new thing for the design team?
We do have our design team here, I can invite Sabina to come up and answer that question.
I have the similar question about the outdoor ramp, like what that would look like, if it changes the building facade, obviously it does, but how?
So, we could do it, but it might cost a couple, some design fee for us to do it at this point?
So, we just have to use our imagination?
Yes.
Can, how much are renderings? Can you do renderings?
Yes.
Because that would be a lot less expensive than a mock-up, right?
Oh, I wasn't thinking it was a full mock-up, it was a design, so it would be a rendering anyway, yeah.
Okay.
I'll just use my imagination, save us some money, we're already talking about value engineering. So, without the outdoor ramp, are we, would that little rooftop go away?
The middle piece will go away.
So, the middle ramp, and then there's the ledge, and then there's a little roof?
Yes, the roof will remain.
And what would it be, what would it be attached to? To the glass?
It has steel structure supporting the whole roof and the wall, so it would just sit on top of that.
So, you have one wall with two roofs?
No, which is one, just the top roof, there will be no middle.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Okay, so without the walkway, you no longer have that little ledge?
Correct.
That little roof, okay, I can use my imagination there. Okay, how do you want to do this?
We'll still have breaks, because...
It depends on how we add the 20% of plaster hole, so we might add it horizontally or vertically, we haven't designed it yet.
I have, yeah, I have ideas too. How do you want to approach this, Mr. Mayor?
Well, Jackie can imagine everything, so you go first, and then Wes, and then Tony, then Jim. Oh.
Sure, let's go one at a time if you want to.
Sure, we can do one at a time. I will say...
I guess we'll do one at a time.
Or do you know?
Community living room, so Jackie, do you want to go first?
Yes, and caveat, though. So, I know that the commission weighed in on this yesterday, and this is a normal step in the process. In the beginning, you know, there's designs, but we don't nail down the costs necessarily. Now, we're at 30%, right? The design, which is a natural pause point to evaluate and to really hone in on those costs. So, that's why we're having this discussion. There's also the continued interest of, you know, just being as smart with the dollars as possible, so I want to preface that. That being said, I don't like losing any part of this project, it feels like a loss, but I also recognize the need to, you know, wherever we can, find some savings. So, in my mind, as I was reviewing this, what has lingered with me is the desire of amenities versus aesthetics, and I don't love losing aesthetics, I don't want to lose the beauty of the park, but I would much rather keep, you know, if we're shaving off costs, shave off some aesthetic costs, and shave off amenities. So, that's my thought process. Now, to your question, community living room, this is one of those where I go, I don't want to lose the aesthetic. But again, if it saves us money, and that can help either increase or keep the amenities that are going to be offered to the community, then I'm in favor of it. So, I don't want to lose it, but I am okay with completely removing community living room, because it will help us in the bottom line. So, I'm a yes, okay, go ahead and remove this community living room.
So, you're saying, take the 600,000?
600,000, yes.
Okay. Wes?
Remove it all.
Wes is 600K. Tony?
I would have removed 50% of it, but this isn't the one I'm going, I'm prepared to fight on.
All right, Jim?
Remove it.
Okay, so, there's your three, just, or whoever's keeping track, there's your three. Okay, skate park pump track, who wants to go first?
I'll go first.
All right.
This is the one that I'm prepared to fight on.
Okay.
I am absolutely not going to accept losing an amenity that's already in the park. So, I'm, I want to maintain it, I want to leave it the way that it's at, don't change it, don't reduce it, don't remove it.
Okay, Wes?
I didn't like it in the beginning, and I don't like it now. I think that, I agree with you, Tony, that it sucks to lose an amenity, and there should something be there, but I've said all along, it's the wrong place, so I'm advocating for all of it to go.
Jackie?
I want to maintain it. I also think that there's no other place in the city where we have a pump track, so I wouldn't want to consider even reducing it by 50% if that means losing the pump track, so I want to maintain it.
Jim?
I want to keep it, but I don't want to reduce it. If we were going to reduce it, I would say we try to relocate it, because the biggest thing I'm concerned about is just the amount of tagging that's going to happen and how we're going to get ahead of that. I was talking to Planning Commissioner Olson earlier today, and he was telling me about, he spent some time at the Yorblinda Adventure Playground, which is in Hurless Barton Park, and that adventure playground area, it's, he said it was just gorgeous, and you know, it's like, well, how do they keep it from getting trashed? And it's because they have a single point of access that's monitored. It requires you to check in, it's free to the public, there's no access after hours, reservations are required for the weekends, and there's no reservations required during the week. But it is free, but it's just being monitored, and you can't get in it after hours, which a lot of stuff's going to take place. So, if we keep it, which I really want to do, we have to do something to make sure it just doesn't get destroyed in one day, right? Because we know it will. So, I thought this was a really good idea as an option. Keep the homeless out of there at night, too, you know? But I don't know how we would go about doing it, or, you know, if you guys even agree with that. Sylvia, can you put those pictures I sent you up real quick?
While she's doing that, we talked about this in the beginning, I was an advocate for fencing the entire park. You can't fence off certain sections and expect that they're not going to get in. Where there's a will, there's a way. We're adding, you know, we're potentially adding water structures that are walls for people to tag on. I think we've proven how we deal with graffiti, which is, we get people out there within 24 to 48 hours, and we cover it up.
We don't at City Park.
Well, you damn well better be certain we're going to after we spend this amount of money on this park.
I would hope so, sure, but I'm trying to offer up just some different options. Matt says this adventure park looks like it was built yesterday, it's in perfect condition, the part that is a monitored entry, and I just thought it was intriguing, here's a nice gazebo area that people can use during the day, on weekends with reservations, without reservations during the week, and it's monitored. So, if I just have to say keep it or lose it, I want to keep it 100%, but I'm just really, I think we can do better with keeping it maintained in a, in a way that, you know, makes the area look beautiful, like this picture here. Anyway, let me see if there's anything else on that. Nope. Thanks, Sylvia.
Okay, so, Tony was, can you go back to that slide? So, Tony was zero, maintain it, Wes was get rid of it, Jackie's maintain it, and so Jim, you're maintain it. So, there's your three, whoever's keeping track. Okay, outdoor ramp, you won, Tony, good job. Outdoor ramp?
I...
The community win.
The community won. Who wants to go first on outdoor ramp? Wes?
Kill it.
Wes is...
I'm for removing it, and I remember when we had this discussion, it was also, there was a question about public safety with this ramp, and so, that it would be difficult to have an, you know, anyway, all sorts of scenarios where this ramp creates some public safety concerns, so I'm in favor of removing it.
My other idea for illuminating it was, and it kind of goes to the next one, which is, one of the reasons we had all the windows was because of the ramp, and I think frankly, if we take the ramp out, we can eliminate, I think we can eliminate more than 20% of the windows, because in the end, that's the way the sun is coming in, and it's going to bake, and we're going to see our, the cost to air conditioning this place is going to be ridiculous anyway, but I would like, for sure, I mean, but that's one of the reasons why I wanted to get rid of the ramp, I liked that one as well, and, but I think we could frankly save more than 20% of the windows just by doing that.
All right, so, but just to stay with the ramp, you're killed, Wes is killed, Jim's, who killed it? Jackie killed it, Wes killed it.
Removed it.
Removed it.
I'm not a scientist.
I'm so corrected up here today. I'm so corrected up here today. All right, so whoever's keeping track, you're good there. Wes, you want to kick off exterior wall glazing?
Yeah, my thought is just like I said, but however, I think on the same thing on the inside too. It's the aesthetic of, A, what are you looking at? And then what are you looking at into? Where's the sun going to shine? You know, those sorts of things. So I think losing at least 20% I think should be a starting point. And I think we'll lose even more with the emphasis being, you know, the picture that you see for the linear metal ceiling, as long as you preserve that entrance and what goes into the banquet room, I'd almost say you could lose, you know, most, if not everything, on the other side.
Just to clarify, we're not losing the number of windows. The reduction comes in the size of the windows. Because you're going to build a wall in...
Yeah, square footage, that's all.
Yes.
I think you're right. It's going to be really hot when that sun sets in there. So, on the building.
So Tony's...
I'm curious what that does as well to like the design of the building. Do we extend the roof? Do we, I still can't picture like what this building is going to look like with a trim around the windows, and if that's just going to look ridiculous. And so...
Justin, with these changes, can we get some updated renderings?
Don't we have a picture of what the wall looks like, one of the walls? I think it's one of the other, one of the pictures from before. You had a picture of an exterior wall, and it would just be the same, right?
But renderings aren't that hard. I mean, they all have rivet, right?
I don't want to cause us to be charged for a thing just because I can't, like, I just need it drawn on a napkin.
Pretty sure we have it.
We are going to update the renderings once we get the direction on the design. Once we start to move on beyond 30%, then we get updated renderings.
Okay. Jackie, are you...
Can I just make a comment? The current design essentially has a sheer wall of glass with very minimal spacing in between. So really, really tight. If you go out here to our lobby, you can see variations. Some of these windows have bigger bar frames in between them, right? So if you imagine that being plaster and just expanding that, so instead of it looking like one sheer wall, it would look maybe more like, possibly if you did both vertical and horizontal, something more like a net.
Okay.
Or you could space them all so they were all vertical, so they would be more vertical lines.
Okay.
Or a set of horizontal lines. All of that would be, you know, up to the design team to propose some ideas about how that would look the best. But ultimately, it changes it from something that looks more or less clean without any seams to where you'd start to see seams.
So then, when we get these updated renderings, are we going to get options, aesthetic options? Because I'm in favor of the reducing the 20%, saving that money. And I agree with my colleagues that without that second roof, you know, the sunlight is going to really make everything really hot. So are we going to get options of what that aesthetically looks like with these windows being reduced? Yeah? Or is it just going to come back?
It looks like they're talking with each other over there. We should pass it over to them.
Yes, we confirmed we can get options of what the windows would look like.
Yes. Cool. Then I am in favor of reducing.
Okay, that's, doesn't matter. Jim and I think we're good. Okay, roofing materials?
You want to let Jim go first this time?
Jim, do you want to say?
Sure, I'm fine with replacing with PVC.
PVC? Tony?
Oh, you get to go.
Oh, I'm all for PVC. I think it's great.
What's the lifespan of PVC versus tile?
Hundred years.
Yeah? Like, it's better, it's better, it's more durable?
It's more durable? Well, it's plastic, so it's not going anywhere.
And repair work on that is terrible?
It's more minimal than terracotta.
Got it.
Because terracotta gets chipped and things like that.
While I don't like the look of it, again, it's for me, it's that amenities versus aesthetics, and so I'm willing to go with the cost savings.
Okay, so that, removed that. Linear metal ceiling? Does anybody want to go first?
Jim?
Jim?
I like it.
I like it too. I'm just going to chime in.
As in, maintain or replace?
Oh, I maintain.
Oh.
Maintain. I like the metal roofing too.
So my only caveat, or only definitive, I like the linear metal ceiling in the lobby areas and the entrance to the banquet. I think all the other areas, open ceiling. Same with the gym and the workout rooms and...
Well, the linear metal ceiling wouldn't be in the gyms.
Well, it would, it was supposed to follow all the way over to, yeah. It's supposed to follow all the way over to where the classrooms are, and I don't think it's needed.
It's a connector piece, right? It's the hallways. It's in the slide 21. It's the purple area.
Oh, slide 21.
A couple of slides before this.
But Wes, you're not talking about keeping an open ceiling in the banquet room, right?
No.
Okay.
No, I like maintaining, I like, I think it would look strange to have the metal ceiling out in front of the banquet hall but not out in front of the fitness building. So I'm an option of maintaining it.
Yeah, I am as well. The entryway is always your most important focal point. So the metal ceiling was saved. Game room? I'll go first. Save the game room.
Yeah, I think you made a good point with getting the kids off the street. I agree with you. And we've already made it clear that we hate conference rooms. And that, I would say, that kind of going to send you back to work a little bit to rework how that would look with that extra space not being a conference room. So I don't know what that would look like.
And what that means.
Can you make a clarifying point? So we call it a conference room because it's combinable, but it's, in the operations plan, it's programmed as classrooms. So for example, during adventure camp, we would take that conference room and put it into two. So essentially, you've taken five classrooms and brought it down to four classrooms. And in the operations plan, we use all four of those classrooms during like summer adventure camp. So that would be used for senior center, it would be used for, not for senior programming, for other classes. And then the youth during adventure camp, they would rotate in and out of those spaces. So although it is a conference room, because it's combinable into a bigger space, it's really two classrooms. And we are happy to go back and readjust the operations plan, if that's your direction, to take out those pieces. We just need to make sure that we could update that.
Well, can you see where the game room is? And then it looks like there's bathrooms next to it, and then it looks like one of the conference rooms bordered or butts up to the game room. Could you make that, put in a double, a six-foot door in there so kids can overflow into that?
What is that purple room?
That's the admin offices. That's staff offices. And then the conference room is just behind that in the bluish turquoise space. That's the conference room, and then across from that is other classroom space.
Yeah, but, so those are bathrooms right there in gray, right? Is that what those are?
Yes, it is.
So those are big bathrooms.
A lot of people.
Apparently. So for the game room, can you put in a six-foot door? You architects in the audience, I really hope you're catching that when, now that you're in the programming phase of all this right now, how important it is for kids to come in off the streets. So I hope as you go forward in your design work and your construction documents, that that's a key focus for kids coming in off the street, so...
Just to add, I don't disagree with anybody. I don't want to lose the game room either. But it's not really the architect's job to design or to program. It's our staff's job to program. And the only thing I want to say is, it's important to all of us up here that there's a great space that is free for kids to use to come in off the street. Think about that in your programming. I should have said it sooner because I saw that that's also a classroom. You guys should have not let us go down the "we hate conference room" path, but we did. It's not going to be used as a conference room probably 80% of the time. It's going to be used for programming. Keep that in mind when you guys are programming, because if we start, and I know that you will, but if we start to see, hey, between three and six is when all of the kids want to come in, then one of those classrooms is overflow for the game room. That's what you guys need to make sure that you guys are understanding in programming to give you guys the ability to direct the architects to make sure that...
But in, so there's two levels of programming. So Donna and Jason are going to have their level of programming, but in architectural world, they also go through programming. So I'm saying in their realm that they stick to the programming of making sure kids...
Could utilize that as an overflow, or it could be used as overflow.
And that would be part of their programming.
I don't know why a classroom wouldn't be used. It could be used for anything. It's a conference room, it's a classroom, it's everything. Who cares? They'll figure it out.
Well, the point is, or my point is, is there's a solid wall between those two right now, where if they put in a doorway, you've now doubled your...
We reduce that to plaster to drywall.
Here's, I'm going to play devil's advocate. So kids are going to go into the game room, and then they're going to go into, they're going to be able to go into this other room and then be able to wander to some other part of the... Let them figure it out. This is, they're the experts. Let them figure it out.
No, I'm going to figure it out right now.
Okay.
The kids need a place to go, and there is a potential there to open it up. They have operable walls, and you have admin right next to it where they're going to put some Hitler ladies in there that yell at kids anyways. So I would rather they put it in their programming now than later.
It's definitely on all of our minds, like maybe the admin and the classroom swap sides, and there's some...
Justin, you're not going to hire any Hitler ladies, right? That's enough that...
The point is, I think, you know, the mayor's point is loud and clear, and I think there is unanimous support for it that, you know, we don't want to lose the game room, and we definitely want a versatile space that accommodates for kids to come in for free.
I think we have the direction on that one. Thank you.
Gymnasium? Does anybody dare go first on this?
Yeah, I'd say expand.
Okay, Jackie?
How was it, the game room that's the original game room that was proposed? How does that compare with what's at the CCC now? Double? The proposed, not this one, the proposed?
Are you referring to activity room A downstairs behind the desk?
The gymnasium compared to the original gymnasium that's, okay, I'll...
Oh, the gymnasium.
Gymnasium, that's what we're talking about, right?
You said game room.
Oh, I'm sorry. Game, I'm sorry, gymnasium.
Yes, the proposed gymnasium would, at its current, it's like-for-like, so it's very similar in size and scope. The proposed, the new addition, is double the size.
They expand 40%? Okay, all right, that was my only question.
Oh, I forgot to, so Jackie, sorry, my bad. Jackie was expand. Wes, what were you? Okay, he's undecided at the moment. You're a question mark. Tony?
Make it bigger.
Tony's expand. Jim?
Yeah, I just want to get clarification. Jason, the current CCC is one court?
We have an odd size there. It's very close to a full-size regulation NBA, which is the most desired play court. So the expanded would have two full-size, and then by default, we'd be able to have two junior courts. And then the championship court is more of an added bonus. That's an NBA court, but it's centered to the building so we could have spectators.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, four junior courts.
I was going to say, I was like, we're going to four.
I'm sorry, Jim, are you asking, the current CCC, how many hoops are in there now?
Yes.
Can we answer that?
Two.
Two, yeah. It's one full-size-ish court.
And this would be going to seven?
Eight.
Four junior size, four junior size full courts.
It would be eight hoops.
Okay, so we have two hoops now, and we're going to...
Eight.
Eight-ish.
For $2 million.
Proposing to go to eight.
Correct.
With a bunch of different variations in size and uses.
Yes, and let me clarify that a little bit too. So we will program for the big courts as a primary portion of our programming, but as a gym space, it's going to have a number of different uses, not just basketball. We're going to have volleyball and badminton. We're going to have dodgeball tournaments and adaptive programs. So we're going to have the equipment that also goes along. We currently use mobile hoops for like our tiny tots basketball program, so leave that to us to handle. But we'll work with the consultants to make sure that we get the adequate footing for the higher-level play.
I'm good with expanding as well.
Can we have a city council versus management dodgeball game?
Oh, dodgeball, yes.
Okay, so Jim was expand, so there's your three votes right there. Okay, that was invigorating. Donna, do you have anything else for us, or...
Did we reach a conclusion for the skate park pump track?
Yes.
We did?
Yes.
Did we do the outside stuff and the concrete and the shrubs and everything?
Yeah, we didn't really go down that list.
We can go back to that list if you'd like to finalize that one.
No, we didn't.
All right, here we go. Is this our list?
This is the summary, yes.
All right, so remove terrace seating. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. I don't think it's needed, and I think, yeah, so remove it.
An R?
I hate losing it, but again, amenities versus aesthetics, I will, I'm an option of removing it.
Jackie's an R, and Tony, Jim, or any of you an R?
I feel the same way. I don't want to see it go because I like it a lot, but I'd rather expand the gym for the kids.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's your three on that. Reduce shrubs 20%. I'll be an R on that.
Gone.
Wes is an R. Anybody else want to be an R?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, so there's your three on that. Reduce paving with DG 20%? I'll be an R on that.
Yeah, I like that too.
And that's actually a little bit...
Too much paving.
Yeah, and that's better for your knees, is it not?
Okay, so you're good there, right? Reduce fitness center 10%?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Okay, so we're good there. Reduce group fitness room 10%?
Yes.
Wes is yes.
Y'all.
Jim's yes, I'm yes.
Yes.
Jackie's yes. Tony doesn't get to vote.
No, it's, I don't disagree. I think that that's fine.
Okay, Tony gets to vote. Remove spin room?
Yes.
Tony's yes.
He was so quick on that. Yes.
Jackie's no spinning for Jackie. Jim, do you want to spin? Jim's, okay, there you go. Remove finished ceilings and fitness area?
Yes.
It's just that first building block. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, you're good there. Reduce plaster walls 40% to jipboard. Why aren't all the walls jipboard?
I don't understand what this would look like. Like, how is this a big deal?
You wouldn't be able to tell the difference between plaster and finished drywall. It's just if you go up there and you hit it, you're going to put your whole, your hand through drywall plaster, you're going to break your hand. It's much more labor-intensive as well.
It's a design feature, so it gives more of a textured wall look.
Looks cool.
Yeah.
But to the mayor's point...
I'm a fan of drywall. I'd cover the world in drywall.
If you can't tell the difference, and if it reduces the price by so much, you can visually tell the difference. It will have a different look and a different texture.
Plaster looks like glass and nice and beautiful.
I'll also weigh in too. Plaster's a little bit more difficult to repair. So if we have someone who accidentally runs their noggin into the wall and it makes a dent, you can quickly patch drywall. You can also hang pictures by poking a hole in the drywall. Whereas if you crack into plaster, it can cause some other structural things. But it's, in terms of maintenance, drywall's a little bit easier than the plaster.
A little bit, a lot of bit. I grew up with a house of plaster. It's difficult to deal with it. I would actually, I agree. I would actually look at removing all of the plaster and anywhere as that we can.
I'm a fan of drywall.
Well, would that save us?
Yeah.
A lot of money.
If reducing it by 40% is half a million.
A million or so?
It would be a...
So the proposal we were talking about with Rios is that the exterior of the building is wrapped in plaster.
That makes sense.
The original design had essentially four pods of buildings, and each of those pods was entirely wrapped in plaster. And so this reduction of 40% really just looks at the interior portion of the building to replace that with drywall. So it's a reduction overall in the plaster, but it's contained to a space that's interior where that drywall material will be more appropriate.
Exterior's plaster, interior's drywall, right?
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yep. Okay, reduce conference rooms. Well, we're in love with those.
Oh, conference room, yes, that's fine.
And then the banquet room's not getting reduced. We know that.
I'm the only yes.
No, okay, Wes is yes.
Take it all.
Wes will not be invited.
Buildings, take out everything. Take it all out.
Councilmember Casillas, Wes has not invited Ellie's continera. He doesn't like banquets.
Listen, I like banquets. She's not...
Okay, is there anything else we need to...
Do you have all the direction you need?
Settle?
Yes, we do.
All right, and you're done with this presentation, yeah?
Yes, we are all done. Thank you very much.
Every time she sees me, it's...
All right, thanks DK and Jason helping. We are adjourned until 6 o'clock tonight.